First of all, I wanted to say to all of you that the weather is beautiful out there. And it keeps up for a while, keeps us along the dry side. Oh, which brings me to the meeting tonight. On, let's see if I read this right. On March Monday, on my way into the eye doctor office at 11:25 a.m., a Walmart huge truck came right through that light headed north. Again, I object to that. Why can't he take off the carbon heights? That's his business. But I'm still saying it's not right to come through. Particularly when from 1:15 till 1:15 gets a little congested. Also, I was trying to get across Washington Avenue. It's Saturday morning, going from the north side to the PNC side. Anyway, a lady kept trying to get across, almost didn't make it. That light almost needs five more seconds to give people like us time to get across. That's one of the things that bothered me. Also, I'm still urging council and PennDOT, put in the left turn at chartiers, Washington and chartiers to go to chartiers. Before some terrible accident happens there. There were a couple of bad spots that a lot of us visitors somehow had. Fortunately, most of them are on the backside of the creek. Also, I want to urge you people to put pressure on PennDOT. For heaven's sakes, put that highway across from Upper Sinclair, straight across. And people eventually will end up on the toll road of the new 43 or whatever it is. But that will get some of the traffic out of Upper Sinclair. If they go and come in and spend money, fine. If they're just going through, yeah, that Upper Sinclair will take care of it. And leading up to Upper Sinclair is the one that really bothers me the most. Saturday, March 27th, I was a passenger in my niece's car on McLaughlin Run Road. At our line, the field looked great, except for the work that they were doing here. The minute you cross that line, I haven't seen that kind of debris since June 21st. I'm sorry, all the way to their new tennis courts. It's awful. And I think that pressure should be put there on whoever. Get the trees and branches and everything out of there. Get it cleaned up. It's just a little run right now. It's been a very dangerous thing in the future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. Jay Stack, please. Jay.
I noticed that the park there with the zebra, it's been a lot of dog feces there. And the burrow, if you have to clean that up at one a.m. on a Monday. So they can tell you how much, I mean, it's out of hand. Maybe if they can adjust the camera from the library. Because the people that are doing it live on Station Street. They have any apartments. And they come down and let them do sit and keep on walking.
Did you stole my phone, you know, to comment on that?
Is that something where you can put like a pet clean station?
Well, no, they need to clean. I walk.
No, no, what I'm saying is put a garbage can so they, hey, you're gonna bring your dog and at least get off the road.
These people aren't carrying bags. I walk my dog. I carry four bags with me.
I understand that. What I'm saying is have a thing there with bags. If they're uncommon, they don't bring bags. Hey, we have to bring four. There are a lot of parks do that.
Then another thing, I want, I live on Maple Street. And they put that wall up, I give Lori pictures. And I was just curious, is there any council member that drove down to see the progress?
You mean the wall that they put up last?
It was on my street, they had an outside contract. I was just curious, is there any council member? What's your opinion on that wall?
Well, I saw, again, it was high in one, a couple of spots, and dropped down.
In front of my property, 35 feet, okay? In front of my house, nothing was done. But they go 75 feet beyond my property, and it's dead inch straight. And the analogy the engineer gave was, if the wheel's not broke, don't fix it. There's a three to four inch curve there, and it's engaging baskets. And me being the flood victim, had to replace my furnace three times in two and a half years. They had the opportunity, as they was coming down, to do it. And it's done. You people don't have to fudge with it anymore. It's done. But apparently, Lori told me tonight, she's going to have Mr. Bott come down. Because the garbage bin did part of it, and they did a good job. And we, there's four houses on that street that get flooded. Now, the people on the other side of the creek, they put a levee up. And Bruce, you know that, okay? So now, that water, which I don't, hey, protect your property what you can. I can't go out and pour a levee on a street. But now that water is finching, and it's coming back. So you put a levee up, I'm getting a backwash of it. And I was just curious because being the council member, and no, he was the only one. And then Bruce sent it six months later after I kept asking him.
I was there at the same time where.
Anyways, I don't know. What's, what's, what is the pro, what's the purpose of council members? If you don't drive around the community and see what's going on. You have to, a council member here, that you have on the books, what ordinance there is for what your property should be, and his looks like crap. And he, and it's last house on the right by the bridge. There's not been a resident in there for 30 years, 25 years. And I physically, visually seen rats going in it when I walked my dog. And at this end, I won't mention names, but the guy sells appliances on Main Street to Bridgeville. At 520 on Baldwin Street. There hasn't been a roof on that building in 30 years. 30 years, there's not been a roof. And the problem is, the people that don't have the money to fix their properties get letters. And the people who have the money, they bought the pie. And it's not right. If you're going to set ordinances, obey by it. Go by what you write and preach. And I had some more stuff that my tongue's up. Thank you.
Matt Smith, please.
I live on Bluff Street extension with the, within the 800 block of Bowery Road. It's kind of like the lowest spot. And over the past year or year and a half, noticed considerable increase in traffic, dump truck traffic popping down Bowery Road. Problem is, they keep running with their jack brakes on. And the accelerator, right around Cold School Road, coast down through that valley area. And it just rumbles, something fierce. I noticed it more whenever I'm laid off in the wintertime. Of course, everybody's in their houses, their houses are all buttoned up. Summertime's coming, it's just gonna sound even worse. I looked it up, and they said that we collectively can file an application with PennDOT. I don't know if it's gonna cost anything. Algae County.
Algae County up to McLaughlin Run.
Yeah, towards the.
That's not Algae County.
That's Algae County.
I just looked it up as to who governs or enforces the use of brake departors and able to put signage up. And they said you have to file an application with the state. And all this, and it has to meet certain criteria, certain criteria. So far, Bowery Road right there means all.
It looks residential there, that would be something that we.
Yeah, it is, that would be residential.
We look into that?
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
No, no, yes, that's an option.
Yeah, but where you live, you know, they're, they're running through. And the trucks, also, they're off speed going through.
The speed limit's 25 miles an hour. So you're coming up over the hill at 40, and then hitting the jack brake to get down this speed.
Oh, they're even, even going outbound towards Bowery Road. They're hauling, and they're hauling loads. And it doesn't take much, you know, a lot of people pack out of their driveways. They can't be clipped. Problem is, police can't really enforce it because truckers are gonna be on their CD talking to each other. All of a sudden, they're all gonna be doing 23 miles an hour through there until they get out. I just wanted to see if somebody could be dealt about that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, man. Bob Fryer, please.
I want to talk about two subjects briefly. The flood, stations to the flood, and also the traffic congestion problem. This is you, no, is the plan that was recommended to the municipal planning commission. And you guys about making Walton Street area a flood plain, making the creek bed certain team, and eliminating Bowery Road from the.
That is not the plan that was, you know, was recommended.
Yeah, that's it.
No, that's your plan.
No, your own, that's the plan. And this is the actual plan that was recommended.
That's the plan that was recommended. The plan on the top is not the plan that was recommended.
Well, I disagree with it, but anyway, that's okay. My point was, my plan indicates that the expert wants to turn the Baldwin Street business district into a flood plain, rather than having a flood plain in a certain, rather than a flood plain in 20 acre area. Obviously, current ownership on land is taken, okay? But I wonder, but I'm curious about that. The last time I was here with the planning commission, some of you were present. The chairman, I'm gonna ask the chairman why they favored, recommended on to you this plan, which I think is this plan. By the way, if you check this more carefully, there are missed mentions of this that I correctly prepared. But anyway, who first recommended, the company that did this plan for us, the bridge of holidaying, why does it?
We did a, we, we, we did a study.
You did what?
Did professional.
You did that. But how did you pick, how did you pick that firm?
Yeah, we had a quote, we did a proposal.
Did you advertise a newspaper or something, or?
How long ago? I forget.
I can't remember, we got two different plus up places.
Now, we may have asked for a quote from them as they were working on other property that's a plan that we did.
Yeah, I, I have.
Pressure serves. I can't hold me to that on the top.
It's like five years ago.
That's okay. It was, you think Gateway Engineering recommended?
No, nothing to do with it. Nothing to do with it.
Because I'm going to say that firm, a very competent firm, have been subcontracting progress to make their ownership for 15 years, you know?
That, that, that firm, environmental planning design works for virtually every discipline, you know, like in town. On a regular basis.
That, that's good. But so, so you, you, so they must have selected, not arbitrarily, with some thought that I've recommended specifically by Upper Sinclair or Gateway.
I know, that's actually contrary to everything that was said right in the last minute. I didn't mark anything to do with any recommendations by.
Oh, well, that's not anything. No, that's not, I agree, I agree. What I wanted to show you, what I was concerned about was, the, the planning commission chairman said that he was under the impression that the Baldwin Street road, at least that one 200 foot section of it, was unstable. It was being undermined by undetermined water sources either the creek or elsewhere. But I wanted to.
Not Baldwin Street.
No, I'm sorry, I meant. Bob Fryer, yes. What I wanted to show you is this. About a week ago, I went up on Bluff Street. And I took photographs of all of the downspots from just the first four buildings on Bluff Street. And all of them have been disconnected. They're running out onto the lines. And the, determining the size of the roof drains, you're talking about, it's all together, those four homes alone. You know, a roof drain is like a funnel. But this four homes are generating a pipe that has capacity five foot wide, that's flooding water over the hill onto Bowery Road in that area that we assumed that would be having a problem with. And, excuse me, that's in addition to 70,000 square feet of lawn, grass and service area that's doing the same thing. And what I also did was, this is, excuse me. These are the, these are the four homes, you, you certainly understand that. The arrows indicate the direction of the flow. And the, I contacted, tried to contact Gateway Engineering about two months ago. They took a copy of the study, but they, just like said, he was told, that you guys told him not to talk to me. So I had to file a document information thing to get this study going. I wanted to show to you on the study list, the places where they bore were obviously where the biggest problem was here. And then the ore to bore thread. The results that they got were, were not indicating that the subbase was greatly being undermined by water. It indicated that, that, that when you look at the number of downspots that are flowing onto that property, that seems to be, in my opinion, the problem is. And the other thing that I think you can notice next time you drive down there. When you get into that first, those four, four homes area, the area from the edge of the road runs 10, 12, 14 feet. But as you move further up Bluff Street, the area over which the water has to go is much longer. So it would be absorbed, it would be, do much less damage. And the other thing that I wanted to mention to you was, last week, I spent about a half hour with someone from the Federal Highway Administration.
Who was that?
Who, Bob?
No way, I've never met somebody.
Of course not.
You didn't want to hear it, Bob.
Well, you wanna, actually, I was so enthusiastic about what they told me. I came, I rushed down to the council, to the borough building, and wanted to talk to Lori, but she was too busy. I called her two other times a few days after that, to tell you what I understood, was good news. I got another return calls. The, the, the Megalon story, sorry, excuse me. The Highway Administration and FEMA gave me two bits of information that were misstated here. The last time, I think we were talking about a, the area between McLaughlin River Creek and Baldwin Street being made a, a 400 car parking lot. You guys were talking about permeable water surfaces. And I think there's a, there's a legislation or something that in flood plains, FEMA will pay for 80 to 90% if possible during ongoing flood plain, if the flood plain is transformed into grass and trees.
We're working on that process right now.
We're working with property owners right now.
Well, let me tell you what the guy from FEMA told me. I asked him.
I've been working with.
Well, I'm glad to hear it, but I just want to tell you what he told me. I asked him.
Who, Bob? If you don't tell us who the guy is, we can't contact him, maybe he could help us. We can't.
If I get permission from him to release his name, I'll be glad.
Bob, that sounds ridiculous, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll tell you what, the common sense of the, informed, he said he.
Why can't you give us his name so we can check on him? It's silly, Bob.
Excuse me, he mentioned that the requirement of having the, the area in which they help, you know, tear down buildings.
We're actually in the middle of working with residents of Baldwin Street. That I'm going to talk about today, this evening. We're in the middle of the process.
That's wonderful.
And that's really kind of trade secret, is Lori's welcome.
I know, I know what you have to do.
And federal power and state government.
I know all this.
Okay, well, if there's one thing you know, I was under the impression that FEMA has a requirement that any area in which they buy a building or pay for 90% of it, it has to be redone as grass, trees, as conservation area.
If you get permission from FEMA to use it for another use.
That's exactly right. And they think.
Wait, you said she didn't.
Did she get two or?
I thought she was four.
He said that he touched to the.
I thought you said I didn't know.
That's not the very good word, that's okay. The, the point is, you, you can, if you get, he said that the local.
Bob, enough.
I know.
You're saying something we're already doing. You're not bringing anything new.
Are you going to have the area, first of all, I'm assuming that you aren't taking another step for implementing the plan that, that plan was presented to you by the expert. Okay, if you do, that's insane.
We haven't brought it.
Good, I'm glad, I know you haven't endorsed the plan, it was a recommendation. But my point is, you can transfer the area between, if you leave Bowery Road where it is, and leave Bluff and the creek where it is, you can, through special permission, transfer the area between there and Baldwin Street into a 400 car parking lot. Do you agree? Or are you going to try to do that? That's what I'm asking you.
Bob, I'm not, I don't know what we're gonna do with that, but I know it's something that we understand that we can use that piece of property to mitigate the flooding while providing green space and parking. It isn't gonna be a 400 lot parking lot.
50 million liter turn to the parking lot.
Exactly. You would definitely want to use some of it for parking. But you also want to make it look nice with a park.
Well, of course.
And, and maybe lower it so you have some place for the flooding to go. We were aware of this.
Well, lower it's not gonna do anything. The other, what do you do, the Federal Highway Administration says? I want to finish my comment, and then you can tell me.
What, I can tell you now, I can stop you right now if I want to.
And I can sue you next week.
Well, also, it was all except service situation, do they, you're about 15 minutes on a three minute dislocation.
I want to finish, I want to finish. I'll tell you, when I came in here to tell Lori, when I came in here to tell Lori, I wanted to tell her, sure, choose to save it two times. All right? My point is, the Federal Highway Administration says, the only way you're gonna get billions of dollars to rebuild your central business district is to do something aggressive about solving the traffic congestion problem in Bridgeville, Collier, and South Fayette, along to Washington High Court, until we stop exhibiting the same thoughts that my friend, who I love, who doesn't know what she's talking about very well, about detouring consumer motorists around the community, which caused the collapse of the business district, which caused not only the damage to people, you're gonna get in. That plan with a three year career, is 200 yard extension of City Avenue, the bridge over, the railroad bridge over the thing, and the Baldwin Street thing making it two and a half. That, that's my final thank you for the night. Wonderful.
Fred Martino, please.
Excuse me, by the way, that's the railroad place. Why? It was, it was okay.
Oh, he stood up.
I'm not official, I'm not gonna use.
I know you are. Mystery guy.
I have to call Bob.
Stop acting Bob.
He sees you as Bob. You know, I think I'm kind of right here, so with this being to us, like flood issues. So we have a year almost gone by, and that flood issue is still burning everyone's heart. So my, my two points here, number one, has any action been taken by anyone in council to do anything about the retaining wall from?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please tell me what it is?
Did you explore it? Behind there, but we're trying to help you.
Oh, yes, actually, it's actually been on my report. And the reason why we have a report with that is we are in the middle of doing RFPs for engineering. The, the, the RFPs.
Where are RFPs?
RFP, request for proposals for engineering. They were due on Friday. I actually provided them to council for review, and we'll be doing interviews. Once we have a firm in hand, then that's one of the first things that we're going to do. As I said, it's been listed on my report, and I have it on my report as being on hold because I can't start with an interim engineer, which is what we have right now. We have an engineering firm to just do the basics until we get a firm in here.
So it, it, from my understanding of this, then the engineer agreed? That that's the point that should be, that we should give attention to?
Yes, yes. Yes, and we.
That's, you want, you want to put that wall just like you suggested?
Yes.
Okay.
And we wanted, we didn't want to start that with an interim engineer. And, you know, then not just Laura with us, and then we have to transfer all the information.
Okay, thank you. Do you think that that's possibly going to get done within a year or two?
We're planning on doing some projects this year.
Okay, because we're on borrowed time here, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you for that. Second point, we received, I received a letter from Lori on the backflow preventers, Lori? So is that project completed on Baldwin Street?
Yes.
It is. And how many backflow preventers did you put on Baldwin Street? How many?
I think there were, yeah, there were around 15, I would have to count them. But approximately 15.
So what's the report back? Have they, have they worked, have they?
We haven't done, I haven't gotten any calls since they were put in, so apparently they're working.
So.
They start functioning, they'll work when.
Right.
We haven't had a rain to use them yet.
That's right.
Okay, now I have one installed.
From this?
No, prior to that. And I still have two inches and three inches in my basement.
Appreciate that what these do, and we don't have it engineered.
Well, problem is, I go, they're gonna stop onto Avenue of Water coming through your pipes. They don't get it no matter what. They don't stop it from coming through your fresh drains, your foundation drains, etc., etc. Most of us will take that trade off.
Yes, and when the water out front is a foot deep on the streets, obviously, it's.
Yeah. And hopefully, the wall would have been there. So what's the scope, the time scope for that, Lori?
Well, the backflow, the surveys were due back to me, I think, April 17th. And then what we will do is, we already have the specifications because we already did phase one. So I will be able to hand that to the interim engineers because it's not re-inventing wheel. And we will be able to bid for how many that we'll need to install during this phase, of which I'm getting a lot back that already have done, so I think there'll be as many this time.
So if you already have, if you already have one, well, like I had, I had one installed 15, 20 years ago. Is this version better than the one that was 15 or 20 years ago?
Well, what this version is, is it's that they, they're, they're putting them in, in different places conducive to where the lateral enters the main. Where they're going into the lateral because we have to, we're doing agreements with the property owners because the lateral, of course, is their property. So they're, they're putting them in where the lateral, lateral enters the main and into your pipe a little bit. And of course, what that does is it lets your sewer water out, but it doesn't let the, any overflow from the sanitary sewer in, lots. So it, they looked at different types of backflow preventers and felt that this one was the best one, and it required the least maintenance. But the property owner is going to be required to maintain it after we put it in, so.
It's outside the house, yours is probably inside.
It is on the house, yeah.
It's outside, it's.
It's outside, it's outside, like in the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It, it goes down, it has a big cap on the top of it. Take the cap off, you pull, to maintain it, you pull the valve part up and then clean it and then put it back down. It's pretty nice, pretty nice setup.
Yeah, because the rats will eat that flat, so you have to watch that, too.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Brett. Joyce.
Good evening. Um, my purpose tonight is to find out what the borough and the neighborhood can do about the light on that seven thirty Bank Street. It just continues to get worse. I briefed, I ran into Bill at a social function, and he said there has been some action taken, but what? I mean, I've thought about even getting a petition together as neighborhood, but is this, is this the kind of guy who's gonna care if we get a petition?
He's not, and what I did, actually, it was last week.
Oh.
I sent him a different letter than I sent him for every year, twice a year, gone to the magistrate, did the minimum that he had to do, and then it just got worse again. So, I sent him a letter telling him that because I felt that his property is becoming a public safety issue. The borough has the, the power to go onto the property, clean it up, and then we'll go to the magistrate and he'll be charged for, you know, because it doesn't do me any good to send him letters. It doesn't do me any good to send him to the magistrate, and it doesn't do any good to fine him because he doesn't pay.
Oh, he doesn't pay?
No, so.
So, what, what's your, like, what's your next step?
My next step is for me to, me to send our public works department.
But the borough won't get reimbursed for that, I mean, the property.
We'll lean it, so if they're like decides to sell it, then we'll place a lien on it.
Okay.
Because what he's done is, you know, he'll just do the minimum required. He never cuts around the house.
And then he's tied and leaves the lawn over in the middle.
Um, the, the porch is horrible, and actually, I'm going to send the building inspector up because the house is, as far as the structure of the house, especially the porch, is really bad. So, but that's, that's of course the action I'm taking now.
Okay.
Because it would take our guys probably two hours.
Two, right.
It would just eliminate such a mess, yeah. So, but I've tried everything.
Okay.
I've tried.
Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that the person that got on the magistrate, too?
Yeah. All right, well, that makes me feel better, that obviously you're, you have it under, you have it under.
I tried.
That's a word.
Do we only, do we only have statutory, like, activities to try with this person? Have you tried anything compassionate? Is he sick, is he old, is he sick?
He's not, he's not old.
His kids hate him, is his mom ill?
He lives alone, and he's what, in his, what, forties, maybe?
Yeah, and he just, I mean, we, we went over and we took a tree down because schoolchildren walked under that tree. So, we took it down because the bus stop was there and we were afraid it was gonna hurt the kids. So, we've tried to do things, to be more compassionate and just say, okay, we're gonna do this because we know he's got.
Some people are just gonna.
Yeah, or don't care, just what they're home. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Good luck, Joyce. John Duncan.
Yeah, I'm just calling about Warner, Warner Avenue, the hillside. I just wondered if there was anything.
Yes.
On the books, because it gets worse.
We actually applied for CITF, that's Community Architecture and Tourism Fund grant, for the stabilization of that hillside. It was a two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar grant that went in in January, so we're hoping to hear soon, fingers crossed that we hear something. If not, we're going to have to fund it. But we're hoping that we'll get the grant to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, because with wet weather coming, it's just washing away worse and worse.
Yes.
And I don't know if he, the engineer, I can, yeah.
Joe's lights.
He, he was still gonna try to get ahold of the railroad. Like, they had not done anything down there, like, or dredging or cleaning up along the tracks.
Right.
Yeah, from the creek all the way up to the bank.
It's very hard to get everything.
Yeah. Lori has a contact, and she said we have very little common jurisdiction with them, or other sorts of things, but she does have the local manager.
Is there two railroads, different?
This is our, and Ohio Central is that one. We don't have Gary this.
Okay, so you have two different railroads.
Yes.
Great. All right, thank you. Excellent. All right, moving on to the next item. Motion to the Borough Council regarding the minutes of March eleventh, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting estimated. Bruce Cawdich.
Second.
Phil Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number two zero one nine dash zero two. Motion to the Borough Council regarding resolution number two zero one nine dash zero two. Resolution regarding the original borough, sub-applicant, and the colonel of Pennsylvania. FEMA applicant agreed to participate in the FEMA hazardous, hazard mitigation grant program. The borough and FEMA agreed to acquire real property voluntarily from owners and demolish hazard-prone structures restricting the land to open space in perpetuity. Following all guidelines of the grant program, surveys were sent to Baldwin Street property, eleven responding. Work to be completed on the grant is ongoing with the deadline of May twenty first, or May twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen. You're talking about earlier.
Yes.
Bruce Cawdich.
I'll share it.
And Brigitte Schneider, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number one, Greenlight Go Grant Adapted Sign Upgrade. Motion to the Borough Council regarding the remitual current estimate number one in the amount of fifty, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents to launder Technical Services Incorporated for the bid document requiring people to send the cost of equipment upon delivery. Greenlight Go Grant was awarded in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars with a funding match earmarked in the Capital Improvements Fund by the borough of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. Costs in excess of the borough share are refunded by the state.
Yes, sir.
Dino Chichelli?
Second.
And Joe Klosmo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Unemployment Assistant to the Borough Manager position. Motion to the Borough Council for the recommendation of the Administration Committee to hire Cheryl Wolwak, Wolwark, I'm sorry, to a full-time position of Assistant to the Borough Manager. Unemployment begin on April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and starting salary forty-eight dollars per year with benefits provided in agreement. Comprehensive search was conducted through website, deed, and municipal junction for individual with background in municipal field, background in municipal field. Bruce Cawdich.
Second.
And second by Joe Klosmo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Proposed ordinance fire department reimbursement of material and service costs. Motion to the Borough Council authorizing Solicitor McDermott to research and prepare an ordinance authorizing the Bridle Volunteer Fire Department to obtain reimbursement for the cost of materials expended and services rendered in fighting fires and rendering emergency rescue services. Proposed ordinance will be provided to council for review prior to requesting authorization to be advertised.
Last question, please.
Yes, sir.
Chief, what's approximately an average expense for not a huge fire, but just a fall?
Um, we just had one, the purpose of this is commercial end, commercial vehicles and commercial buildings. We've been billing already for accidents, and that we have a company that does it. We just did an accident where we get reimbursed for our time, and UC just stopped them. One accident, a car back there, you know, so it's to help recruit what we do. So, this ordinance is under the commercial end, is what we're looking for. Pennsylvania requires that, we don't have that, we can't build for those services. And it only gets built to people with insurance. We, so after the homeowners or the business people, they don't have insurance. If they have insurance, it's, you pay for it in your insurance.
So, the insurance companies pay?
Yeah, exactly, so it's not going after an individual, or if they walk on their own business. Thank you. And in fact, as the chief's alluding to, some of the ordinances that we'll see, that we've seen around, they actually put that right in the ordinance. Yes, yes, and that's what we're looking for, too. And it's on the insurance reimbursable and not directed unless there's a voluntary desire to reimburse on the. And everybody here paid, you paid us in your insurance, and a lot of people don't know it's sitting there.
I'll move.
Okay. Who, who's the first motion? Joe Rucci is second, and Bruce Cawdich, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I'll bill this, motion to the Borough Council regarding the April two thousand nineteen buildings. I'll move. Joe Rucci.
Second.
And Bruce, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Payroll, motion to the Borough Council approving the payrolls of April twelfth, nineteen twenty-sixth, and May three and ten, two thousand nineteen.
So.
Bruce Cawdich.
Second.
And Brigitte Schneider, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So, my third report, motion to accept the March two thousand nineteen listed tax collector report.
One point.
Yes, sir.
There is one accident, we received the two thousand nineteen report of one of the items in her report.
Okay.
You can forget that, I'll take it. All right. But I'll move.
Okay. Joe, you had the second.
Second.
And we got one to Dino, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the February two thousand nineteen financial report.
I'll move.
Joe Rucci.
Second.
And Dino, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the March two thousand nineteen police report.
So, move.
Phil Henderson.
Second.
And Dino Pacheco, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and motion to accept the March two thousand nineteen zoning report.
So, move.
Second.
I get a bill, yeah. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Peter reports. Bruce.
I don't have it.
Financial reports, Joe.
Um, really, the only items that are normal expenses is from, we did have a little bit of the tree removals and things like that, is a major expenses, but other than that, it's pretty normal. Still looking to collect some of that eighteen tax dollars that are still owed in its table, so I'd love to see that.
Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir. Parks, we're racing on the restroom, restoration down in Chitiers. Had a slight issue with the electrical system going in down there, the conduit evidently got full and locked, and it's running from the flat. Borough had to send our electrician down to clean out the conduit and get the electricity going, so hopefully that'll get the topic going. Getting down to time to start the baseball season, I hope. The public works, people are going around the parks picking up all the winter debris, the branches and whatnot fall off the trees, and there's some dirt and whatnot, and there's some sidewalks and spot on the parking lot by the water fountain, by the big field, it's like about twenty by thirty foot pot, it's basically mud, so we're gonna have to get in there and put some stone or asphalt patching there. The guys are down there, they found a couple of leaks in the concession stand, and the water line they fixed the other day, and there was one in the Chitiers, one restroom, it was a part to be pretty good to go out next week, so. Uh, walking around, I noticed the gentleman said about the dog, B.C., dirt, whatever, down in secretly down in the gazebo park down there. It was, I saw a couple of spots, but I was kind of, so, like was suggested, I think we probably will absolutely get the, the dog cleanup stations, it's like a little wooden thing with the plastic bags and a little garbage can there. Hopefully, people will take care of it on their own, if I can find or whatever. Another thing I noticed walking up and down Washington Avenue, it's been like just three years, we put planners in on Washington Avenue, and there's no debris, there's like hundreds of cigarette butts. And they're a pain in the butt to clean up, and people are just, pardon, they're the pigs. They have cigarettes, and they throw them in the things. Not a darn thing we can do, we could try and clean them up, but it's just a pain in the neck to clean up. So, I just asked everybody out there, if you're smoking, don't put your cigarettes, not the car, you know, don't drop them there. It was, the, the work we did there, I think it looks nice, flowers are grown and whatnot, you got cigarette butts and whatnot in there, it's just uncalled for, so. Yeah, I asked them that, what you said, deadline for the newsletter is just coming Wednesday, so if you've got, stuck one in the newsletter to the borough or get it to them, that's all.
Thanks, Chris. Public Works.
It gives, chairman, well, it's a, a usual normal work if you do. So, we're in catch base, and I know they were on the park today, I don't know if you know or not, so problem with the electric, I think it's to care that today.
Yes, we know, yeah.
Yeah, we're seeing something else. Because I checked on my public work. Joe, good job. Don't make that hurt. With water and electricity, that's bad situation.
Normally, it's up to the electricity.
I know. Anyway, the brush, cleaner, grinder, weekly, through April. So, a lot of people now can put their stuff out, through April. Street sweeping through April. May to September, third full week of the month. The schedule is on the borough website, and many other things there that we do. And that would be good to go on their website. That's the real website that the borough offers. That's our website, so I encourage you people to go on that. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Dino.
How much did we sweep, Joe?
I would say, Bill?
Yeah, Mike, just one thing, and I'm not sure, probably have all seen the celebrity that has become the Bridle Police Department, and.
I missed it, wow.
And I, I say this tonight only because they did a very good deed, and they didn't do it for this reason, to be recognized like this, but people outside of our community recognize what we have, and we do, too. And for that, chief, I won't pile on, I just wanted to say thanks to you and the fire department for what you guys did to help build the morale up here. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone reach, if you learn some possible information?
Couple million, actually.
Through the record, a couple million.
A couple million. Amazing. Thanks, Bill. Madam Mayor.
This is National Library Week, April seventeenth and thirteenth. We certainly are thankful for Ben and his staff, and volunteers in the vicinity, and friends of the library for promoting use of the library and supporting the library with annual conferences and events. Also like to remind everyone to support our farmer's final fish fry on April the twelfth, at seven. And we have, rag talk is open, and this past weekend, Rail Yard celebrated with their days of brand opening, and today we were also fortunate that Deblay's Italian Steak House has officially had their brand opening today, so let's support all, all of them. Unfortunately, the chief is kind enough to pass along, it's a card to me to read to you. Everyone knows that we made the news because of the officer going down on Newton Street, finding the kids playing with a recycling can and an old soccer ball trying to play basketball, so. The story is that they got the basketball stand and all, that they needed to play basketball, and one of the children was kind enough to send a thank you note. And it says, Dear Bridgeville Police and Fire Department, thank you very much for the basketball food and really appreciate it. We enjoy it very much and thank you sincerely, Mike Deere. Thanks to the officer, our chief. They also played a game with the kids. And Rick Austin delivered the basketball, put it there, so thank you so much.
Mayor, there's, there's a rumor going around though, I heard. I heard you're throwing the first pitch this year.
Looking forward to it. My son tells me I need to start practicing.
You'll have to let us know when the first pitch is gonna happen, uh, part.
April twenty-seventh.
Oh, it's already?
Twenty-seventh. And I hope everyone will have a blessed Easter and happy Passover, and I just have something I'd like to read. It says, How Greatness Comes. A person's greatness can't be hid, but shines in many forms. Sometimes it comes through sunshine days, sometimes it comes through storms. Person's greatness is revealed in many, many ways. Sometimes it shines when we're cursed, sometimes it's when we're praised. A person's greatness may be seen when fame his name aborns. Sometimes it comes in other ways, but Christ, it bleeds reforms. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Police Chief?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, the only thing I have is that the multi-jurisdictional food drive wrapped up. I collected all the food from our local boxes on Saturday, and I'd like to thank everybody that put a donation box in their business. And this Thursday, the departments will all meet and make the delivery of the food goods to these food bank at, uh, that's about the name of the district area in charge.
Thank you. Paul?
Hey, I have nothing to add to our.
Uh, Fire Chief, you'll tell you.
Thanks, Mr. President. You do have, uh, my report, what we did last month. Just letting everybody know, we've been kinda very busy so far this year. Hope it slows down. Nothing personal. But, uh, also, this week's our last fish fry. So make sure you come down, and then also we've got coming up is our cash patch, uh, just things gathering for everybody in Bridgeville in May. May fourth is the date, you have tickets, so if you need them, stop down Thursday night, to the best night to stop down the station if you wanna get them. Or just give us a call. Somebody's on my number, yeah. Couple of us are going this week, we're leaving Wednesday to go to Indianapolis for a big fire prevention. It's a worldwide event, actually, to run off for some training and, uh,
Okay, you leave?
Wednesday morning, we'll be on the road at six thirty. So, but, as I was saying about the calls, this dish, uh, we had one today, and today's call was a hundred and eight. We're up to already this year. So we're only just at the eighth one. That's all I got, President. And thanks for the support from everybody, please.
Thank you. Uh, historical society, Mayor?
Thank you. Nothing like anyone twice giving circulation, thank you. Um, tomorrow night, seven o'clock, over at the old railroad station, the old library, will be the last time that we will hold Bridgeville High School history. It is the year nineteen sixty, which was the last year that we didn't have a high school within the bounds of Bridgeville. We are expecting a big group there because their yearbook in nineteen sixty was outstanding in that they went back all the way to nineteen twenty or twenty-three and listed every person in every class. So we're expecting a big crowd, and you're all welcome to come. Deceroy, which, uh, we're in Naperville and a lot of other places, thank God, because a lot of business is going on in the capital. In addition, we are still selling old history books that libraries and schools did not want. We're selling them for a dollar, a dollarish. So far, we've had three teachers come in and buy over three hundred copies, but they prefer to have those at home for reference when they're teaching. What can I say? We're still selling in some way. We are very, very excited and very pleased that the Heinz History Center is coming to us. On April thirtieth, which is a Tuesday night, at seven thirty down at the Fire Hall, a woman from, uh, there, and as a matter of fact, I don't have her name here, uh, her name is Emily Ruby from the Heinz History Center, and she will be presenting the Destination Moon, uh, Dash Apollo eleven mission. Now, I know they've done this at schools, I don't know that they've done this anywhere else, but they're coming to Bridgeville, and we're very excited, we want you all to come to the Fire Hall and, and enjoy that with us. The history that we get down there, out of the six students who heard Angela Frank taking notes, oh. It was amazing, their eyes, they begged their mouths all over them, they had no idea that he was what, number thirteen, fourteen out of fifteen children? Anyway, interesting stuff. Does anyone in your family bake? We are looking for people to bake goodies, we are having our semi-annual bake sale the week, right, few days before Mother's Day, we need a Mother's Day gift. Uh, it will be Thursday, the ninth and tenth, uh, this Friday in May. And, uh, we need people to bake, but we need all of you to come by, and, uh, we hope you will do that. Poster support coming. We also are starting work on our Day on the Avenue, which is June fifteenth. Uh, we have some new volunteers who have a lot more tech, tech, yes, yes, they do, have a lot more tech than I do. But again, you're always invited, please pop in, see what we do, look at the stuff that needs to be done, and you'll realize that you're coming apart at the seams already. But we like what we do, you're all invited, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Do you want me to make a department report? What? Oh, I'm just collaborating, sorry. Collaborating, there's, I should be collaborating. I just want you to notice from the corporate side, I would write it down.
Good evening, Ben Hornbeck, Library Director. As Mayor Kaplan mentioned, this is National Library Week, so it's the perfect time to come and see you all. In honor of the celebration, I brought each of them here. This is a busy time, and then we're getting things wrapped up from two thousand and eighteen and moving forward with two thousand and nineteen, obviously. So we just submitted our state reports to you every year. Um, this is, this is a formal report, not giving you guys a formal report, but I'm gonna give, uh, I just wanted to share a few big numbers with you. Um, at the end of two thousand and eighteen, we had three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight registered library cardholders. We circulated ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four items. We have a total of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one items physically in the library that patrons can check out, and then we also have four hundred and thirty-two thousand eBooks that are available for circulation as well. In two thousand and eighteen, we offered eight hundred and ninety-six programs that were attended by ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four individuals. I also have for you just a brief, um, overview of what we've accomplished so far in two thousand and nineteen. This mainly relates to, um, our day-to-day operations to give you an idea of how many people are coming in the library as far as using the computers, acquiring items, and attending our programs, I'll pass that down as well. It ebbs and flows from month to month, but I am happy to say when we looked at the two thousand and eighteen report compared to two thousand and seventeen, all of those numbers have continued to increase. Not huge increases, but increases are increasing, so we'll take it. Also, we recently welcomed a new youth services staff member. Um, our youth programs continue to be our most well-received consistently, week to week. So in that effort, we have a new youth services person, and then we're also in the process of hiring a youth services staff member who will focus specifically on outreach to the community and bringing programs both to our community and to South Bay. Um, as you know, we have a partnership with South Bay, so both these positions, we're able to develop with, um, that partnership and will benefit both communities, as we see a lot of overlap in the patrons who are coming to both libraries. Finally, at the end of the month, um, we do have some fundraisers coming up. Uh, the Friends of the Library were kind enough to order, to organize one of DeBlaze Pizza Nights. Um, we just had one recently in Chapote as well, uh, that was well-received, so we have one coming up on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, from five P M. to eight P M. at DeBlaze Pizza. And then right after that, the Friends of the Library are also, um, doing their spring book sale. That'll be Thursday, April twenty-fifth through Saturday, April twenty-seventh. It's bag sale the whole time, there's gonna be lots of great books, they're busy every single week, um, organizing those books and getting ready, so I encourage all to stop down and visit.
Thanks. Thank you, Mary. Do I need to part with, uh, planning, uh, or a manager board?
I spin my paperwork, things that we have some comments or questions, but under the criteria of the FEMA disaster mitigation property acquisition grant is that I just go over, um, with council, what it would be, just the criteria, how, how it's working, where we are in the process, and what it's due. So, um, initially, we sent out surveys, um, started with Paul Woodstreet, and, uh, two households maybe want to participate in the property acquisition process. We received approximately eleven surveys, um, that were returned to us of potential candidates. And, uh, I have been meeting with most of them, a couple of them I sent paperwork to them, and they sent it back to me, but most of them have come into the Borough building, sat down with me, and we fill out the paperwork together. Um, there's one more form that has to go with them to fill out, and then the next step will be the appraisals. So as far as the criteria for this grant goes, um, it, it cannot be commercial properties, it can't be rentals and, um, private residential properties. It's totally voluntary, um, the property owner, um, um, comes into the program, um, at any time in the program. If the appraisals come back and they're not happy with it, they can withdraw. The homes are appraised at pre-disaster value, um, not at post-disaster. So if they weren't able to afford to fix their house, if they didn't have blood insurance or that type of thing, um, that doesn't count against them. What will happen will be if they did have blood insurance through the NFIP, um, which is through FEMA, and they received, um, monies, um, for their losses, and they did not utilize that money for repairs, then when their house is purchased by FEMA, the monies that they, that they receive will be deducted, because that's double-dipping. And as we discussed, and as we talked about with Claude, um, the original criteria is, is that the property stays green space through perpetuity, but you can apply to FEMA to do some reasonable things with the property, and as long as you have their approval, you can do other things with it. So that's where we are with that. So, uh, as I said, the appraisals are the next step, um, the, uh, the grant application, the entire packet has to be in by May twenty-fourth. Um, my target is to get it in the second week of May, because if we're able to send it to FEMA first, they're going to review them, and anything they think that we need to tweak or add, or left out something small or that type of thing, they'll keep it back to us, we'll fix it, and then we'll send it back in. So, um, we're moving along quite nicely with that. So I actually had two applications, we had to send a letter of interest, I'm going backwards. Letter of interest had to go into FEMA, and they had numbered the property to move in the next step. And I attached the properties that wanted to, um, participate with that application. There were a couple that came in late, they're called subsidiaries. I am able to include them, um, because I've had a couple with the NFIP issue, and they don't wanna have those monies taken off their purchase price, so they decided to step off, and so far, we're, we're at eight, we'll probably be at ten. So if anybody has any questions regarding the process, we're moving along quite nicely so.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I sent them to all the properties on both.
Anything else?
Also. There's one thing that I'd like to mention, because I saw, um, there, there were some comments regarding us losing the grant in the block on run. We did not lose the grant, um, the grant is, um, is alive and well. We have to, um, we have to move forward and, and, um, complete the grant by December twenty twenty. I would like to hold off on bidding it right now, because we're planning on doing, uh, lowering the field and putting the trash rack in, and those trucks are going to have to go through where we're going to be doing upgrades. So timetable-wise, it, it makes sense to do, do the hall build and trash rack, and then move maybe, uh, spring two thousand, um, two thousand. But if we do the field earlier, we might be able to, it just depends. And that, I'm done.
All business. You business. You move to a chair?
I'm gonna move to Bruce.
My second back.
Chair for all of you here.